Okay, we'll have approval of the last river meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? None being opposed, stand as approved.
Mayor, prior to public comment, I just ask that you amend the agenda to reflect new business, which is Roman numeral 12 G, changing to an item we will title licenses. And then that will make the consent agenda H, one through seven. Normally licenses appear on the consent agenda. Somehow our new agenda software didn't push this document through. It has been reviewed by staff and went through all of the necessary reviews. When we get to that business item, I'll read aloud the contractor license and the contractors that are applying into there, since this wasn't available in the packet on Friday, just so that everybody knows who those people are.
Okay. Next item is public comment. If anyone who has anything they'd like to talk about, please go forward here. Being done, we'll move on.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim April 28, 2016, as Arbor Day. And Andy, do you have anything to add to this item?
I don't.
Just get on with proclaiming it Arbor Day. Okay. All right.
Make a motion. Let me put the proclamation together.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Okay. So would they like to come up?
Yeah, we talked about it.
All right. I believe that Mayor, that the, we have representatives from the Girl Scouts that were here, or had their proclamation, I believe, read at the last minute, that would like an opportunity to speak. So if you don't mind jumping back up to public comment, I think this would be appropriate for them to come up. So the representatives from the Girl Scouts, come on up.
Oh my goodness, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. We'll read the proclamation. Okay. Whereas, Girl Scouts, the preeminent organization for girls in the United States and around the world, has been an active part of the Garden City community. And whereas, through the Girl Scout Cookie Program, girls learn about business, goal setting, the value of teamwork, and money management, all of which helps them become leaders who are confident in themselves and their abilities. Use their knowledge to affect change in their lives and in the lives of those around them. And whereas, through the support of generous donors and annual product sale activities, such as the Girl Scout Cookie Sale, the Girl Scout Organization is able to offer quality programs on a year-round basis to girls in all racial, ethnic, cultural, religious, and socio-economic groups. And whereas, the city of Garden City is committed to supporting the programs provided by the Girl Scouts of Kansas-Hartland, and encourage our communities to support Girl Scouting and its annual money-earning activity, the annual Girl Scout Cookie Sales. Now therefore, I, Janet A. Dahl, Mayor of the city of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim February...
Sixteen.
Sixteen, 2016, as Girl Scout Cookie Month, and encourage all citizens to support the annual Girl Scout Cookie Sale, which begins February 13 and will end March 20, and making an investment in the lives of girls and upholding the enterprising spirit of Girl Scouts to remain a self-sufficient organization. Signed and sealed, this, it was the second day of February 2016. Congratulations. All right, one, two, three. Smiles.
Pass out.
Thank you. Thank you ladies.
Thanks for the cookies.
You all can sit here and hand these.
Stay in the lane, look out.
I gotta leave early, so it's going.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you for making that change, Mayor. Item 7A, communications specialist Freeburg will provide information on the 2016 Citizens Academy. I want you to hear a couple seconds to move from being camera person to being staff person.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. The 2016 Citizens Academy will begin on March 3. Citizens Academy is a nine-week program. It's a free program for Garden City residents, where we take you behind the scenes with city staff, and you can learn what we do and what role the city plays in your everyday lives. It starts March 3. We're taking a break the week of spring break, because we figured people might be in town that week. Other than that, it's every Thursday evening, from 5:30 until about 8:00. Some of the highlights include a tour of the control tower at the airport, behind the scenes toward the zoo, we'll get a tour of the new utility service center this year. And there is, there are applications, the schedule, and a bit more information available online at www.garden-city.org, and also on our Facebook and Twitter pages.
How many do you have?
So far, we have five applications. We've got probably another five that have expressed interest, and we can have between 10 and 20 in the class. Any other questions?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Item of information, the city of Garden City has approved a three-year contract extension with the Symmetra Tour for the Garden City Charity Classic. And I'll have Cole come up and present on some of the sponsorship and volunteer opportunities.
Yes, so, hello. Good afternoon. As Matt said, we have extended our contract with Garden City Charity Classic through 2018, so 16, 17, 18. As you know, Garden City Charity Classic is a Symmetra Tour event, ladies professional golf tournament, that raises charity here in southwest Kansas. We have found out recently that we will now be the only professional event in Kansas as the Topeka event has dissolved. So, pretty neat deal that we'll be the only women's professional event in Kansas on a yearly basis. So, in signing this, we wanted to make sure that our three large sponsors were on board with us going forward. So, we presented with the Mariah Fund, which came in at $100,000, the Fiddy County CBB at $50,000, and Mr. Amaro Sammy at $25,000. Presented them each with a three-year contract, and they've all agreed for a three-year deal. So, with that, we've got $300,000 from Mariah Fund, $150,000 from the Fiddy County CBB, and $75,000 from Mr. Sammy. So, that goes a long way for us to kind of get those tournaments rolling. Some of the highlights that you have in your packet, there's a sponsorship agreement that Mr. Brazil drew up for us, and then our sponsorship packet. If you go through there, see some of the pictures and the different opportunities that our sponsors have to support this event. And then, also along with that, if somebody's not able to sponsor, they can certainly volunteer within the event. Last year, we had about 100 volunteers that were with us throughout the week. One of the big groups was our YE, which is Youth Entrepreneur, and there are a bit of fishery, and it's a high school program that they do through a school district, teach the kids how to be entrepreneurs. So, a lot of those kids volunteered. One neat thing that I got back from the Symmetra Tour was the, kind of the 2015 Garden City Charity Classic impact from a media standpoint. There's 131 articles that equated to about 30 million impressions and a media value of $300,000. So, pretty neat deal. 22 countries represented, 29 states, 78 players stayed in the hotels during the week. So, you can see all that, all that information there. So, I just want to make everybody aware of that.
Is there any way you can get some TV coverage?
The Symmetra Tour has talked about possibly going that direction within the next few years, but we haven't...
Well, at least...
You mean just around here? They do the highlights on KSN. They'll do interviews with players, along with the local media, which, you know, does play somewhat statewide, I guess Wichita and west. KSN and KWCH, they do do live highlights of that at the end of the night. But we hope at some point it's in, on Golf Channel and every household.
Do you have your scene built out there?
We have not. We have not gotten that built yet, so...
Is it, wasn't Worthington?
Yeah, Worthington Station is still working on that for us, so...
Hopefully you'll have it by...
Yeah, hopefully we'll have it by the end of this year. That's what I'm thinking.
Right on. One of those.
Right. Right.
Well, I just wonder we estimate, you know, the city's input here. You know, the pros are obvious, you know, pros are nice little friends. You know, the positives are, you know, there, there's no doubt about that. And I like a lot of events around town, you know, that the city provides help for, and I just wondered roughly what...
In 2015, the city didn't support anything. We actually, the golf course got $25,000. So, we actually, it was a moneymaker for the golf course, for the rating of the, this week. It was the same thing in 2014. 2014, we did have a fallback from the OPGA. They had, they had underwritten the contract at $50,000, so they actually paid us to have the first year. We don't anticipate in 16, 17, 18 to impact our budget. Matt will start.
Yeah, I think there's an expense. You forego a week of revenue, and that's sort of what the fixed dollar amount that you get back from a tournament offsets. That's no different than, well, the price is different, but the theory isn't any different than what we would do for the Southwest Kansas Pro-Am, or the AJGA, or the KCAC, the college golf tournament. You look at the time of year that they're coming in, and if it's reasonably moving away green fees, cart rentals, concession sales, then you have to weigh the, you know, the overall community good for the forgone course revenue. This arrangement is certainly a high-profile event, professional event, but it's, it does occur at a time where play begins to slow down. Now, depending on the weather, could still be a high activity over the weekend, but during the weekdays, starting to slow down at this point. And so, our analysis is just even from a golf course operations standpoint, price certain revenue related to what we get directly from the Symmetra Tour is equal to or greater than what we would have otherwise received from carts, green fees, concession sales. Now, from a department expense standpoint, it's literally all hands on deck. And so, it's a, it's a little bit of a labor hog for us, but we try to anticipate that in the weeks coming in, and make up for that in the weeks coming out of the event.
I've been out there, or involved in some way every year, and it's amazing. People talk about it long after and enjoy it, and so it's a great thing. I was curious what all inputs we had there, since it's good to know.
There's been also, in previous years, I'd be remiss if I didn't disclose, that we invested a lot of Cole's time, my time, Melinda's time, just in kind of getting to where that event needs to be from a financial management standpoint, and so, but that's, you know, also part of what we contribute to other departments as well, whenever they take on new ventures. So, that, that soft cost has been considerable over the last couple of years, but don't really see it needing to be that intense moving forward. Thanks, Cole. Congratulations on getting the tournament for another three years. That's very cool. Item C, presentation of the January 2016 staff report from Garden City Regional Airport. If you've got any questions, I think, there she is. Burchell is available to answer any questions you might have on that. Hearing none. Item D's, presentation of the monthly staff report from the city department. If you have any questions on that, Kelly's here, I think. Is Kelly here? Kelly's not here. If you have any questions on that, you can ask me, and I won't know. Item 7E, is the presentation of the monthly financial report from Melinda. Have any questions on that? All right. Item F is the presentation of the Neighborhood and Development Services Report. Do you have any questions on that? We'd be glad to answer them. Hearing none. The police report is item G, and the zoo report is item H. What we'll try to do in the meetings moving forward, or the months moving forward, is pick one or two of these and rotate through them for a presentation, and the other monthly staff reports will be in your packet. You'll always be able to ask questions on them, and the staff people will be here in case you have them. Rotate through those reports and give an opportunity to give a presentation a couple times a year in a little bit greater detail, and provide us the opportunity to put it out there for Channel 8 viewers. Item 8A, our meetings of note. If you have any questions about those or wish to RSVP, let Seeland know.
I think there is a correction?
Yeah, the legislative copy is not the 20th, it's now the 26th.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Of February?
Yes.
Can we have a retreat?
Yeah, we do. We have a, yeah, good catch. That should be on here as well. The city commission will have their...
Twenty-second.
Oh, that is the thing that... So where's the legislative copy that we're moving?
Right above it.
Oh, well, I got you. All right. Never mind. Yeah, we do have a goal-setting retreat. It'll be held at the Phillips Center, begin convening at 8:30. Really, the outline of that is going to be review of the CIP, presentation on that by Shannon Dick. After that, I'll do a financial overview in Melinda's absence. I know she gives that to you each year, but I think you're going to be right. Yeah, and so I'll be giving that this year. And then after that, we'll start, we'll go into sort of the brainstorming, and the review of the goals, the brainstorming, and sort of the establishment of 12 to 18-month goals for the commission. Are there any other questions or corrections? We're ready for item 9A, the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be number 2406-2016A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2406-2016A.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider a resolution declaring support for Overland Property Group's application for tax credits. The Overland Property Group is pursuing tax credits to build low-to-moderate income senior housing as part of a fourth phase of the reserves at Prairie Ridge. Let Harold present on this.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The Overland Property Group, they're the ones that developed the reserves at Prairie Ridge, all three phases. The third one is under construction right now. They have expressed interest in developing a fourth stage. This fourth stage will be, or phase, will be for senior housing, and they are interested in putting in low-to-moderate income senior housing. And they're looking to get tax credits on this property, and they're looking for your support on this item. They will be putting in 48-unit, 48-unit building, which will house one and two bedroom units. It will be for 55 and older, low-to-moderate income senior housing. And we have a resolution for you to sign in support. There is a site plan, it's very preliminary, which shows about approximately where it's going to go, three-echo parcel to the west of Phase 1 of the reserves at Prairie Ridge. You may elect to adopt this resolution, or you can elect not to adopt this resolution. I can answer any questions.
So they, when would they start this?
That is a great question.
Soon as they get approval.
Yeah, usually the way that they like to operate is, as soon as they get all of their approvals, I believe they would like to try for an RHID on this as well. When they, as soon as they get all their approvals, all of their site plans in order, they'd like to build fast.
You seem to be pretty steady.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would be Resolution 2648-2016. Twenty-six, forty-eight? Yes, dash 2016.
We approve the resolution. I use to support the Overland Park, Property Group.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 10B, the governing...
Does that plead the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Item 10B, governing bodies asked to consider resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Chapel Heights, Phase 2. Harold?
As you might know, Chapel Heights is moving along. They'd like to develop their second phase, and they'd like to apply for an RHID for this. In your packets, you should have received a preliminary development plan on this, which includes the development agreement. This is still open for a little bit of negotiation and changes in it. But today, we are just establishing a time and date for the public hearing for this RHID. The date will be April 19. The time will be 1:30 for the public hearing on the Chapel Heights Phase 2 RHID. You do have a resolution to approve. You can approve this resolution, or you can elect to not approve this resolution. Or do you have this time and date? If you have any questions, you can let me know. There's 37 single-family homes going into this new phase.
I'm sorry, how many?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
That'd be 2649?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution number 2649-2016, establishing a date and time for a public hearing for the rural housing incentive district for Chapel Heights, Phase 2.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance to increase the rate fee for dog and cat tags in Garden City, Kansas. And I will give this to Seeland, I guess, to present. I'm not presenting it, so you wrote the memo.
Do I have to go stand over there, or can I stand here?
Who puts, who puts the tags on the wild cats anyway? Is that your job?
I think they put it here. Service and Finance actually is the one that distributes and collects for the tags. And in 2013, police, a police, police department employee asked to have the rate increased from current, I believe it was from two for spayed and neutered, and for animals that were not spayed or neutered, it was five dollars. And so, the police department asked to have that increased to three and six. However, our ordinance, it was never passed by ordinance, but that, that is what our Service and Finance and the animal shelter have been collecting since 2013.
We just need to get our ordinance...
So this was to get our ordinance corrected, yes. But the tags are passed out at the animal shelter and in Service of Finance.
And according to receipts, there's six cats and 15 dogs in Garden City. Give or take.
What, sorry, I'm curious, what were the fees prior to the update?
Two and five. And 50 cents for replacement.
And now it's...
Three and six and a dollar.
It looks like our rates are...
Pretty reasonable.
Very reasonable compared to other cities.
I move that we approve the ordinance, which is what?
Twenty-seven, seventeen, dash 2016.
Twenty-seventeen, dash...
Twenty-seven, seventeen.
Twenty-seven, seventeen, dash 2016.
Got it.
From three dollars, cats, to six. Three to six dollars.
And I think it's for dogs, dogs as well.
Yeah, cats and dogs. And when does that go into effect?
March.
March 1st.
March. 2013, apparently.
March.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 11A, the governing body is asked to provide direction concerning improvements to Bellevue Avenue between Main Street and 8th Street. Steve, present this.
Good afternoon. You'll recall, almost a year ago, a town hall meeting, a resident inquired about improvements to Bellevue Avenue between Main and 8th, along South Side of the cemetery, which is currently two lanes wide, city constructed with millings and seal codes. The question was, could it be made into a regular-looking city street? So, we were directed to develop a cost estimate and meet with the affected property owners to see if we would have enough interest to proceed with a petition for special assessment financing of such an improvement. Based on previous similar situations, A Street south of Hamline, Taylor Avenue south of Fulton, which were unimproved streets with existing homes on the sides, the commission authorized a 70 percent city-at-large, 30 percent benefit district split. So, we proceeded under that basis in meeting with the property owners. The total estimated cost for that improvement is a little over $457,000, with the city picking up about $320,000, and the benefiting properties $137,000. Took us a long time to get with everybody. We actually had a meeting across the hall. Several folks came, but the bigger property owners didn't attend, and it just took a long time to get around everybody. So, essentially, where we are today is, I've got 65 percent opposed. If we go on...
Bush.
Yeah, the owners of 65 percent of the property. There are three ways to determine a petition sufficiency. One is the percentage of the overall benefit district properties, and that's where we have 65 percent saying no. The other is the number of signatures. If a property is owned in joint tenancy, that's two signatures, an individual is one. The city at large, because of a portion of Valley Beach Cemetery, we remain silent as a property owner and side with whatever the majority goes to. So, obviously, if we look at the overall area, we're 65 percent no. If we look at the number of signatures required, it's a 50/50 split. So, any way you look at it, we don't have enough signatures to proceed with a regular petition route. petition round. So the options available are not to proceed due to lack of support, or direct staff to put Bellevue Avenue on, into the capital improvements program and allow the community input to prioritize that as a potential future city-at-large project. It would be something in the future we could use the federal fund exchange dollars with. Although we have enough staff believes to be higher priority projects that Bellevue would be a few years down the road for that. So we're basically recommending just putting it on in the capital improvements program and see how it fares.
I'm wondering, is there enough traffic on that road to warrant an expenditure like this? It doesn't seem to me it's used very much.
I think the people that live there probably would tell you it's a racetrack, just like everywhere else. You know, and with Johnson Trucking, you know, you've got a little heavier traffic now and then going that way. I don't know if, I'm sure we probably did do traffic counts, but I just don't recall what those are off the top of my head. It's certainly not a, something that would compete with, say, improvements to Campus Drive or a road that's considerably heavier travel.
It'd help if we had some more development to the-
Well, yeah, and unfortunately, the way the properties are set up on the north side, you've got a church that owns approximately half of the north side, and the Langs own the other half, and right now-
The cemeteries.
And then the cemeteries, so, yeah. If you had something other than a church that was maybe going to benefit, you know, if they were going to actually build houses on that corner at Eighth and Bellevue, you know, you'd have a better shot.
I think this is tailor-made for the C I P project, given the outcome of, you know, talking to the folks, and so I would move to send it to that process of the next round and kind of see how it vets out that way, and maybe in that, in the meantime, you know, some more of the residents and property owners in the area will change, you know, just change their mind or whatever, so that's, I'll make the motion, send it to capital improvement plan.
Say aye.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Item twelve A, governing body is asked to consider and approve real property transfer agreement and acceptance of a quick claim deed with Stone Development, Inc. Kaylin, you want to, yeah, you do.
You have the staff report in your, in your packet. This property is located on the southwest corner of Jenny Barker Road and Schulman Avenue, and was the stormwater detention pond to the Heritage Place subdivision. However, this property was purchased through a tax sale by Stone Development to be utilized as a regional detention pond, and for operational and functional purposes, staff recommends to maintain this property for use as a semi-regional detention pond. Prior to the conveyance of the real property from Stone Development, Inc., the city, and Stone Development would install four infiltration pits in the bottom of the stormwater detention pond on the real property and location and specifications as determined by acceptable to the city. The commission may approve the real property transfer agreement and accept the quick claim deed for land transfer after all items of the agreement have been satisfied, or not approve the real property transfer agreement or accept the quick claim deed. Staff recommends approval of real property transfer agreement and acceptance of the quick claim deed for land transfer after all items of the agreement have been satisfied. The fiscal note as associated with this land transfer, the land is, is to be due to the city at no cost, however, there will be an ongoing maintenance cost associated with upkeep of the facility, and those costs should average around thirty-five hundred dollars annually. So, any questions?
Those costs would be like mowing and that type of thing?
Yeah, maintenance.
Sure. Okay.
What about fencing?
At this time, there's no plans for any fencing to be placed up there. That's something that may be done in the future, but at this time, it's, it's-
I mean, they dug it down.
Yeah, there's, there is some-
Right now, I mean, you get that pool of water.
Yes, that's always a concern on those, and that will be something that we'll be, we'll be going through a stormwater master plan in the near future, and that we will be addressing some of those issues with some of our outstanding stormwater.
Yeah, just, there's a lot of kids right there.
Yes.
And that's Heritage Place addition, and, you know, I'd be a little concerned about that, it's radical rain, you know. And you're really pretty close to the, there's a sidewalk along Jenny Barker, right?
Yes.
Like, and then that starts down, so.
Yeah, I think there's, there's probably at least ten, fifteen feet on the other side of the sidewalk before the slope begins.
Didn't this fill up, we had a big rain here?
Yes, it did. This, this facility is at capacity.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really a place for, well, of course, now, I guess Schulman Crossing's got a pretty good-sized detention pond.
Yeah, we will be addressing that in, for the whole city, really, as we move forward with the master stormwater plan to address some of those issues that we, we know exist.
Okay, so we need to, I know that we approve the real estate transfer agreement and acceptance of a quick claim deed with Stone Development.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thanks, Kaylin.
Thank you.
Item twelve B, governing body consideration of submitting a trail grant application to the Sunflower Foundation. Steve?
Yeah, the Sunflower Foundation has announced their new application cycle for trail grants. We've had three grants through the Sunflower Foundation in the last six years, two of them in Fennepin Park and then one in Whitey Park. The school district got a grant a couple of years ago for some work around the high school, and I believe Charles and Stones, Victor and Alice Elementary will be submitting an application for a separate grant category for the walking path of their school. So the purpose to bring this today is to see if the commission is interested in pursuing a grant application. They've upped the funding level a little bit again this year. Sunflower grants are equal match, so if we get a forty thousand dollar grant from them, we have to have a forty thousand cash match. Then there's a smaller category, that would be fifteen thousand for shorter connections. But they're basically new pathways. And they both have elements that we can add amenities such as trees, lighting, benches, things like that, to an existing trail. In the past, we've always dealt with building new pathways, so. The alternatives for you to consider would be soliciting recommendations from the advisory boards, the Community Health Advisory Board, Parks and Tree Board, or if you have an idea for a project you'd like us to start looking at, we can begin that as well, or not, decide not to submit an application. A recommendation would be to solicit input from the advisory boards for layer meeting.
Yeah, yeah, go with their ideas. Do you need a motion on that? I'd move to, to give this to the Parks and Tree Board and Community Health Advisory Board for their thoughts as we move forward to make applications.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion?
Is it, now, when you go, kind of the master plan of trails that we go?
Oh, we'll use that, use that, and if there's something that either of these advisory boards has, comes up with is a new one, we certainly won't kick that out just because it's not on the master plan.
Sure.
Great, I'm only trying to go master plan type things.
We've, we've got a lot of sidewalk foot-in in the last, what, ten years or so through this program.
Yeah.
And trails.
And for pretty reasonable investment by the city.
Yes.
Any more discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Steve.
Item twelve C, governing body is asked to consider and approve authorizing a proposal to clean approximately ninety-seven hundred forty-six feet of cast iron water main in various locations of the city. The requested work is in addition to the existing sanitary sewer collection system agreement with Mayor Specialty Services LLC, Dr. Art of Goddard, Kansas. The cost of this proposal is one hundred forty-six thousand one hundred ninety dollars. Fred?
Good afternoon. As Matt said, we're proposing to clean another ninety-seven hundred feet of cast iron water main. In the last few years, we've cleaned over thirteen thousand feet of water mains. We cleaned ninety-six hundred feet in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, and then just shy of thirty-five hundred feet last year. We have identified the following areas for cleaning this year. The two hundred through seven hundred block of North Third Street, the sixteen and seventeen hundred blocks of North Sixth Street, North Seventh Street, North A Street, North B Street, the five hundred and seven hundred block of East Maple, the two hundred block of South First Street, the five to seven hundred block of East Santa Fe Street, the nine hundred block of Davis Street, the seven hundred and eight hundred block of North Conkling Avenue, and the twelve hundred block of West Mulberry Street. We've noticed in areas that developed a lot of customer complaints, as we've tracked these over the past few years, we're, we're not getting calls for rusty water issues in those neighborhoods after we get through and do this line cleaning. The issue with the line cleaning, though, like everything else, it's very labor-intensive, and so not only does mayor contribute a lot of labor to do the cleaning, but our staff has to come back behind. All the services that are impacted by the line cleaning have to be flushed out and recommissioned for the customer. So it, it's an intensive process, but I think it's been well worth it, and we identify these areas based off of what we're noticing in the fields, what we're hearing from customers, and then we're also identifying areas based off of their line failure rates. So if we have an area that has a lot of main breaks, we don't recommend those for cleaning. These are all areas where, really, we don't have main breaks to speak of, but we do have some buildup in the lines. Alternatives would be to approve the proposal from Mayor Specialty Services LLC to clean nine thousand four hundred and seventy-six feet of water main for a total cost of one hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, or to not approve the proposal and direct us to find an alternate solution. This project is budgeted through our annual mains replacement and maintenance line item.
Do you anticipate this is going to be, like, each year, we're going, we'll probably have some areas, that's, that's great.
Half of our water system is cast iron, so we need to anticipate doing this for the foreseeable future.
Fred, a lot of our complaints, and maybe correct me if this is a fright, but my impression is that the water quality issues were primarily aesthetic, but kind of in the national news right now, there's water quality issues from a, from a health standpoint. Does this sort of treatment address those issues too, or are those issues just totally unrelated to what our system might experience? You might talk some about that.
Yeah, the, the lead and copper issues that they've run into in Michigan is something that all states, by nature, as far as I understand, states are mandated to, in, in most cases, enforce the regulations put out by EPA, and so the state of Kansas has a lead and copper monitoring program, City of Garden City participates in that program. We, we have to get thirty samples from around town for water systems that are not treated, so folks that just have tap water coming in the house that aren't doing any other treatment to it, we sample that water. And then, based off the result of the samples, if there's a problem where we're having infiltration of lead and copper into the water, then the state would require the city to take action on that. That has not been the case for the City of Garden City. A lot of it has to do with just the chemical makeup of water and how aggressive it is. So the water main cleaning, the benefits of it, in addition, the aesthetics are the primary benefit that we're giving the customer, and rightfully so. It reduces the need for them to do any kind of secondary treatment in their house to address aesthetic issues. The other thing we're, we address by removing that is we improve flow of fire conditions by, by increasing the smoothness of the pipe, and we also prevent, I mean, it's just fewer things to prevent a load on the system as we disinfect. We always monitor to make sure we have good disinfection in our system. The, the buildup of tuberculation is something that assists us in keeping those, those disinfection levels where they need to be.
You mentioned fire flow, you know, that's, that's a pressure and volume thing, but the customers, a lot of them had low water pressure in their residences or businesses in these areas too, and after cleaning, they get better pressure, and that's sometimes people's concern too, they have very low pressures, because lines are constrained.
Good flow, yeah, yeah.
The area up around Lyle Street, we just put that new main all the way down through there, is, I've heard from a couple of people that are really pleased with their water pressure, and, and now the water is clean. And, and one of them actually said, you know, there was a downside of that, he said that we've got so much water pressure right now, our old pipes are bad and they're leaking, so we had to go in and change the entire house and replumb it out. But other than that, I've heard good, positive reports from up in that area, and didn't you clean some lines before in another part of town?
Well, you know, really, everything up to Lyle Street, if you went over to First Avenue, everything over in that neighborhood was cleaned between paths and hackberries, so a number of those streets were cleaned, and those were a number of areas where we had a lot of complaints, and we just don't hear from that neighborhood. There's another area on the other side of Lyle, Davis Street, that we've had some trouble with, and so we're going to correct that block too, because we corrected an issue for one customer, and now we're creating issues for others, so. There's only so much flushing can do.
In the cleaning process, you showed us photos before of how well it's cleaned out, and it really looked great. Overall, were you satisfied with the lines and the strength because you didn't have to go in and replace them? Sometimes when you go through and clean them, you can kick loose a piece of rust and have some more leaks. Were you satisfied that you really had metal on that area?
The, you know, what we found the first time we did this, the first time we did it, they, they cleaned it with a, with a high-pressure water jet that is pulled through the line, and then they were running a pig through the line, which is basically like a bullet through a gun. What we noticed when we did that project- like a bullet through a gun. What we noticed when we did that process was we found a lot of line breaks because that pig, you know, there was a pressure behind that, and that exposed some weaknesses in the lines. The last session we did, they, they improved their jetting machine. They have a better pressure head on their, on their jetting machine, and a, and a higher pressure they can deliver it at. And so unless it's necessary, they're doing the bulk of the work with the, with the jet and not as much with, with the pigging, which has really eliminated any breaks after cleaning. So it's not stressing that system out, it's just cleaning the line out. And we have that in the contract, that they can do that with the pig if they, if it's not the way we need it. But if it's getting it with the jet to where we need it to be, then we're leaving well enough alone.
But they're not putting steel on it, are they? Inside the line?
Coating pipes?
No. A lot of these lines are too small to do that. You really need a larger main before they can do like cured-in-place type linings. That might be something that might be more, more in the discussion for a large transmission main, but...
We've done some of that, right? Had, had some pipe lines coated when passing?
I don't believe so. Not, not since I've been here. We do, I know in wastewater operations, it's pretty common, they use that type of the method to rebuild manholes and do things with certain...
We've done the manholes for the sewer going down, but, you know. I make a motion we approve the proposal for Mayor Specialty Services to clean the 9,746 feet of water main.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, a second any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, or aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thanks, Fred. Item 12D, the governing body's asked to consider and approve of the distribution of the Downtown Development Fund for projects at 214 and 216 North Main Street.
All right, in your packet, you have the memo that, the staff report that covers the requests for the funding from the Downtown Development Fund. We also have a full copy of the application on the bench if you'd like a copy of that. We included most of the information in the memo and the packet that you have. If you'd like that, we'll have a, a step there. The Gons have submitted an application to the Downtown Development Fund for renovating and remodeling of 214 and 216 North Main Street storefronts and the addition of three second-story apartments. Both the 214 and 216 storefronts are part of a, of one building and is located in the C3 Central Business District. The total cost of the renovation is estimated to be $213,200, and the Gons are asking for an 80% reimbursement in the amount of $170,560. The application's submittal has been attached for your review. The project is to include a full renovation and remodeling of 214 and 216 North Main Street storefronts and the addition of three second-story apartments. This includes replacing the front of the buildings with new stone and siding for, for the apartments. One and two, they will be installing new power, plumbing, heat, and air systems, doors, windows, sheet rock, flooring, kitchen and baths. For apartment three, they will be installing new power, plumbing, ductwork for the heating systems, air systems, doors, windows, sheet rock, flooring, and kitchen and bath. And the Downtown Development Fund has current balance of $344,000 for the remainder of 2016. This application is being presented to the City Commission because the estimated construction costs exceed $50,000. The previous two applications that exceeded $50,000 were Hutton Construction and Garnett Funeral Home. Both their fund requests were $240,000, and they were both awarded $50,000 toward their projects. This project will, will complete the renovations and remodeling in the bill, and all the buildings located at 214 and 216 Main Street in Garden City, and the project is in compliance with the Downtown Master Plan and Garden City zoning regulations. The governing body may fully fund the presented project at $170,560, which would leave $173,440 in the fund for the remainder of 2016. The fund, alternative two is fund the presented project at $50,000, which would leave $294,000 in the fund for the remainder of 2016. Alternative three would be fund the request application at a different amount. Alternative number four would be deny the requested application to the Downtown Development Fund. The governing body may choose any of the alternatives or create a new viable option. A fiscal note, there's currently $344,000 in the fund. If this application is awarded the amount requested, the remaining balance of the Downtown Development Fund for 2016 would be $173,440. The Downtown Development Fund is funded by the General Fund. And we do have, this is one of the projects that they have worked on, actually, previously, they, they were just getting all their plans put together. We have, I believe, three, two or three other plans currently in the same, in their process of gathering information that will be also applying for the Downtown Development Fund probably over the next couple of months. We should be bringing those applications to you for your review and consideration. So, but this is the request at hand. Any questions?
On the, the storefronts, does that mean the interior as well?
Um, it's, it's, my understanding of the plans is it's the exterior facades. Replacing, they will be redoing the glass and the windows, which it will impact the interior on that facade, the match of that facade, yes.
Except for the apartments, I don't believe. The second story will be inside, but not the first story. I think you stay the same.
I think in your packet, you had the proposed facade renovation.
Come on up. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, I'm Alicia Gian-Matthias, Mayor Commissioners. Actually, it will include the interior. We're just going to prepare that as like a, a white box so that any retail store that can just move in there, but everything will be prepared for them, and then they can, they can add what they need to, but it will be ready for a business, so that it does include the interior.
So like electrical?
Yes.
Plumbing, that kind of thing, will be all ready to go?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
I make a motion we approve the presented project at $50,000 mark, which would leave $294,000 in the fund for the remainder of 2016. That kind of remains constant with what we've done in the past.
Second?
There's been a motion, a second any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, or aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you to the applicant. Good luck on your presentation.
Thank you. This is just exactly what we were hoping for. This is just perfect.
It's exciting.
Next door is really a dress I left.
Yeah, this is going to look really nice. And additional residential?
Item 12V, Golf Pro Wassinger will provide information on membership and cart fees, in particular, request to increase those at Buffalo Dunes. Cole?
Hello again. So as you, in my memo here, we, we talked about last time we evaluated and kind of increased fees was in 2013. At the request of myself and, and my advisory board, we started looking at our fees compared to area courses. We selected those based on proximity condition ranking, and there's kind of a summary there, and then I provided a chart. What we found across the board is when, when we average things out, we are below, if not right at the average compared to. And I did just find out yes, or yesterday that Dodge City, Mariah Hills Golf Courses on here went up to the exact rates that, that we will propose at a later meeting. So, and you can kind of see on here, it kind of varies based on where the course is, and which it taught, for example. Their green fees vary by $2 per course. Each annual pass member pays a reduced green fee plus their cart fee and range. They do not offer the, the all-inclusive membership like we do. So I'm just presenting this information to kind of get your feedback on, on how you feel about our rates. We have put it out on social media, we've prepared a document to put in the clubhouse, we've sent a text message and an email alert out to our membership. We've got a few responses. It seems like our retired senior golfers that are on a fixed income have expressed, you know, kind of a distaste towards this, simply because they're on a, on a fixed income. They love playing golf, and they'll pay it, but they don't like it. So we, I have a few letters from, from some other people that I'll present, and hopefully I have a, a good idea throughout our membership through the next two weeks before then, before we present this again. So, so yeah, that's...
Cole, would you ever consider charging more for Attic County?
We've talked about that.
Would the committee say about that?
That's something we can do. I, I really feel like that 75% of our rounds are played by our members.
In Fannie County?
Fannie County, our people that, that buy our annual passes. I don't know that that would impact people coming, you know, I don't know that, I don't know that would change what we do. We certainly could.
It's been a little bit more to get here to play the course.
Right.
I mean, necessarily saying I'm against that idea, but that would just up there, whatever it takes for them to decide to come here and play.
And I, I'm not even opposed to looking at lowering our actual green fee to use the golf course, but looking at our membership and who uses our golf course. The majority of it is, is people that buy annual passes. So I don't know that financially it would make an impact to our green fee. So, but it's something we could certainly look at.
Pretty cheap to get here right now, though.
Yeah, yeah.
How many members do you have currently?
Uh, right around 300 all-inclusive. So with the very, very different memberships and the, and the, you know, included in the families and couples and things like that.
Cole, what's the, and I, maybe average isn't the way to come up with this, but something to think about if the commission moves forward is sort of the price per round increase that that means. And I know that depends on if you're a member that played five times.
You, like Matt, who plays five times in a year, yeah. I, I would say on average, you know, the majority of people that play golf on a regular basis buy a gold membership, which is all-inclusive. They show up, they get their key, they hit their bucket of balls, they go play their eighteen holes, and 87 minutes over 40 degrees, they play. You know, yesterday, we had 36 rounds and 34 of them were gold members. So we, those are the people that use it. But I would say, we had somebody last year play 260 rounds of golf. It's a lot of golf in 365 days.
So what is that?
Let's talk, let's talk.
What's that annual, and is that a thousand, currently a thousand?
That'd be a thousand, that'd be a thousand. Well, $1,100 if they were a, if they were under 65, under, over 65 would be a thousand dollars. So that individual is over 65. So for a thousand dollars, he played 262 rounds of golf.
So that's going up 10%, another hundred dollars. That's going up...
A dollar?
Forty, forty cents up.
Yeah, 40 cents around for him. So, so for the people that use it, it's not a huge impact, and I, I really don't feel like...
Or 20 dollars around for...
For somebody that doesn't...
Somebody that doesn't play that much.
Right. So that's what we'll be proposing kind of going forward, and, and it doesn't make a huge financial impact to our budgets. You know, if we sold the same amount of memberships and ran the same amount of carts, right at $25,000, between $5,000 and $5,000, so. So we'll be presenting that, and, and in the next couple of weeks, I will look into see who's doing the county, in county, out of county, and see if that's a, an impact. I know, for example, in San Diego, if you go play Torrey Pines, if you live in the county, it's 50 bucks. If you're out of county, it's like 275.
Well, the last time the commission looked at that, one of the reasons against doing it, and I'm kind of checking to see if this is still the case, one of the reasons against doing it back then was that's kind of counter to the, we want to be the regional center philosophy. So you, you bring people in from the region, and then you penalize them for not being from the region.
Right.
And the, the other reason was we were the home course to a Haskell County High School and a Kearney County High School, in addition to at that point in time being the home course for Holcombe and Garden City High School. So we're really a three-county, you know, three different, four school districts over three counties were calling Buffalo Dunes their home course, and is that really how we wanted to treat those counties? Well, then you're like, well, let's call these three counties local, and it just...
Charring counties.
Yeah, you don't mean charging, do you?
Do the high schools? Yeah, they pay 250 bucks a sport. So 250 for the girls and 250 for the boys, so.
And so you hope that they play golf outside of the first day of practice and the last meet, but the, you know, if they would come with their parent and play the course and do that during the other nine months of the year, were you leaving a bad taste in their mouth?
Yeah, I didn't realize it was quite that high, 75% around.
Yeah, we, the majority, the majority of our, our rounds come from our, our seasonal pass holders or annual pass. But what was pretty surprising is if you look at, say, the Wichita Golf Courses, just their, their adult memberships, $800, and then they pay additional $5 to $11 per 18 holes to play those golf courses. So for us to have our prices where we are, we're able to do what we do, it's, I mean, it's a pretty neat deal. It's, it's pretty good for the community and, and so...
What were our rounds played at last year?
Right, just over 18,000. So...
And it's been pretty consistent there?
Pretty consistent. Last year was a little bit down from that, I mean, in 2014, and this year it's going to be really good, because, I mean, we've had, we had like 450 rounds in January, and, and we just had 100 persons, or 96-person scramble on Sunday for Scott Stigman. So our rounds are going to be pretty good because of the weather. They, they fluctuate anywhere from 16.5 to 19.5. So going all the way back to 1998, I think 1998 was most, we had 28,000 rounds. But that was kind of when, you know, the nine whole courses around us weren't, weren't open. We've since had one and several aren't open.
Shaver must, too, I think, you know, Rick, Rick probably puts numbers together with that.
Good question.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, commissioners, we put this item originally on the agenda as a business item, seeking action, but then thought, well, in the middle of February, maybe the awareness of this may not be that great. So really put that as an information item on this meeting with the intention of moving forward in the next meeting or two with asking you to consider such an increase. But for those that don't check the multimedia blast messaging that Cole does to the membership, or may have not been solicited by a golf advisory board member as to their opinion on it, we wanted maybe the chance to talk about it in a meeting. Somebody see it on Channel 8 or get reported to in the telegram and generate a little bit more comment period before we bring it to you for your final consideration. Moving on, item 12F. Well, I tell you what, let's jump down to the new 12G, if that's all right, because we don't expect any action after the executive session. So the new 12G, based on reordering the agenda, is consideration of licenses. Normally, this would be on the consent agenda. For the new contractor licenses in 2016 under Class A General Contractor, OC Quality Custom Homes LLC, and Elder Jones, Inc., Class C Residential, Norman D. Buddy Smithson, Class D E Electrical Contractor, Associated Electric LLC, Class E SOC, Specialized Other Contractor, House Siding, Inc. And then these are the 2016 renewals under Class B General Contractor, Midwest Steel, Inc., White Roofing LLC, Class D E Electrical Contractor, Spikes Electric and Parton Electric, Class D Plumbing with Gas, Crest Plumbing, Class E SOC, Specialized Other Contractor, Waycamp Excavating, Inc. Class E SOC, specialized other contractor, Waycamp Excavating, Inc. Staff would recommend you approve these new and renewing licenses.
Make a motion, we approve the new and renewing licenses.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
And the new item 12H, which is the consent agenda, would be items H1 through 7. If there aren't any items that you'd like to pull off?
I move that we approve consent agenda, agenda items 12H1 through 7.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Prior to 12F, the executive session, Mayor, if you would like to do the Commissioner reports, then I think we can retire the Channel 8 broadcast.
What about those, the Live Day Board?
They're in there for your awareness.
Minutes.
Commissioner Locke? Mr. Faykhauser?
I just wanted to comment on the pre-meeting. I'm impressed with what work has been done down at the ballfields and especially Clint Lightner. I'm kind of from the old school and remember what it used to be like. And they've really made a lot of improvements down there, so encourage people to go down and see a game this year. Also, I'd like to call attention to the condition of the street, on Third Street, from Mary to the bypass. I've been going down there a lot recently and that road is really deteriorated and there's a lot of ruts. I mean, you won't, you know, you hit a lot of bumps in that road. I think it's going to take more than a patch, I don't know. We need to look at that and...
We will.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Mr. Sesna?
Just like to encourage everyone to attend the Legislative Coffee on February 27th at 10 o'clock at St. Catherine Hospital in classroom B. A lot of good information comes from those meetings on, from our local representatives on what's happening at, in Topeka. And there's a lot of stuff happening in Topeka, so good information session, but it also helps to answer any questions that you might have concerning any of the legislations that's coming out of Topeka. As Ashley mentioned earlier, please apply for the Citizens Academy. It's a great experience to understand all the nuances that go on behind the scenes in the city. If you really want to know what happens with our community, with the different departments, it's, it's a great experience and I highly recommend it because I've gone through it. Congratulations to Cole on his, his accolades that he received. And I did notice in the paper and in the news that Great Bend is, or they're moving forward with Great Bend on their transload facility. I mean, we don't have to, if we don't have any information, but you might give us an update, maybe through our weekly memo that we get or sometime, just let us know kind of where we're at with our, where we're at in the process, too.
Sure, if Lana wants to give an update now, I think that'd be appropriate.
Thanks for asking. We actually had a follow-up meeting this morning with a private stakeholder as well as folks from city staff and Kansas Department of Transportation, as well as Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Secretary and Deputy Secretary made a trip out to visit with us and, and get a feel for where we are in the project. Ours is a much larger project than what they did in Great Bend, obviously. Ours includes about 900 total acres, theirs is less than 30 total. So it is a little larger deal to put together, plus we do have the private stakeholder side. What we can tell you is that things are moving well on, on that end. You know, part of our concern, obviously, is the purchase of the former packing house property and making sure that that becomes a viable part of the transload facility as well as getting it back into use for our community at a good economic and efficient use. So we feel like this is one of the best opportunities we'll probably have for that and we'll continue to move forward with the negotiations as far as what needs to be done to get that property prepared for that. Our private stakeholder is bringing some additional information to the table that the state has requested from them and to make the case on their end, but we would anticipate that we'll have an announcement from KDOT and regarding exactly the dollar amount and what it is that they intend to partner with in this project within the next 60 days. So that's certainly the direction that we're going. From the economic development standpoint, we'll continue to work with both the city staff and, and your, your body, obviously, as well as with the private stakeholder to ensure that we're providing the information that the state departments want to, to move forward with the project. Anything else you can answer?
No.
Thanks Lana.
Anything else to add, Matt?
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Thanks Lana.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Dale?
Like my fellow Commissioner Sesna said, I, I recommend anybody out there in, in the city to attend the Citizen Academy. I also attended it, it's very enlightening and, and you really pick up on some things you didn't realize that cities evolved in and just how, how well organized it is. So I'd recommend golf, plus they might even feed you a snack at the end of the day in the process. But I did enjoy the tour of Clint Lightner and, and the ballfields Saturday, they are not the ballfields we used to have. So they've come a long way, it's going to be very exciting for, for our local clubs to play on them and also a pro, semi-pro club to come in and play and for enjoyment for all. I want to congratulate the, the fine work on the public service on our public water and our safety is getting us clean water. We all know that there's quite a bit of, of negative stuff coming out of upper part of the country referencing lead in their, their waters. We are fortunate that we don't have that, we have an adequate water supply that's going to last for a number of years. And we have gotten beyond the, the attitude of once was, a statement was made that, you know, if you live in certain parts of the city or you live in an old house, rusty water is just a thing that you have to put up with. But we've proved that that's not true, we've now given you clean water. Other than that, I do want to make one other comment, there's been nine police officers killed in the line of duty this year already. It's, I think it's, that's eight more that was killed this time last year. So to all our public service people, first responders, be careful out there. That's all I have.
I too would like to comment on the tour this, this morning of the two baseball facilities and it's my understanding from personnel from the Rec Commission that those fields are very much appreciated by visiting cities and towns, but those facilities are really nice, so. And then also several of us, we attended the Chamber banquet on Thursday, which was really nice. And last night, I attended the Downtown Vision Annual Meeting and their update was wonderful. Thank you and thank you for all your efforts. And that's all I have.
That, we'd ask the commission to entertain an executive session under the attorney, or under the provision to consult with the attorney for the body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship.
Mayor, I'd say it would maybe take 20 minutes to include Mr. Allen and Mr. Kitner. And if we could start at 2:25.
Okay.
I make a motion that we go into executive session at 2:25 pursuant to KSA 754319B2 pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or, or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship with, of course, Attorney Griswold.
You'll never live that far.
For 20 minutes, thanks.
It's a vacation.
I know.
Christmas angle.
You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thanks for the entertainment.